Pride and eBay Merlin from Mount Pleasant Pride Center. Whereas in the movement toward equal rights for Two Spirit, lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender, two S LGBTQ plus people, a historic turning point occurred on June 28th, 1969 in New York City with the onset of Stonewall riots. During these riots led by transgender women of color, the queer community rose and fought back against discriminatory laws that have since been declared unconstitutional. And whereas, pride celebrations have taken place around the country every June to commemorate the beginning of the Stonewall riots. And whereas, June is celebrated as Pride Month nationwide. And whereas Great Lakes Bay Pride works to connect the two S LGBTQ plus and allied community to resources and education, offer networking opportunities, and advocate for civil rights in the Great Lakes Bay region and beyond. And whereas, our nation was founded on the principle of equal rights for all people, but the fulfillment of this promise has been long in coming for many Americans. Some of the most inspiring moments in our history have arisen from the various civil rights movements that have brought one group after another from the margins to the mainstream of American society. And whereas, the city of Mount Pleasant supports the rights of every citizen to experience equality and freedom from discrimination in all forms. Now, therefore, I, Boomer Wingard, Mayor of the city of Mount Pleasant, do hereby proclaim June 2025 as Pride Month in Mount Pleasant and urge residents to celebrate with our members of the two S LGBTQ plus community. Furthermore, recognizing the contributions made by members of this community and to actively promote the principles of equality, liberty, and justice. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand in great seal of the city of Mount Pleasant, Michigan, this 27th day of May, 2025.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Katie Mandoka, and I am the Prevention and Education Manager for Great Lakes Bay Pride. And to my right is eBay Merlin, the President of the Mount Pleasant Pride Center. And on behalf of our organizations, our Two Spirit LGBTQ plus community, our friends, our allies, we'd like to say thank you to the Commission and Mayor Wingard for allowing us to accept this proclamation. This proclamation is more than a symbolic gesture. It is a powerful acknowledgement of the lives, struggles, and triumphs of Two Spirit LGBTQ plus people, past and present. It represents a continued commitment to visibility, equality, and justice. As we raise the rainbow flags this June, let us remember that pride is not only a celebration, but it's a reflection and a responsibility. It's about creating safe, affirming spaces where everyone can live authentically, love freely, and thrive without fear. So again, thank you, City Council, for this proclamation and your commitment to diversity, equality, and inclusion, not just this month, but every day. Together, let us build a region where every individual can live, work, and love openly and proudly. Happy Pride Month.
Okay, at this time, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda from the Commission?
I would like to add a spot where Ms. Donna Chris can come and present our trip to Okeechobee. She was there 10 years ago, and I thought it was appropriate for her to present at this time.
Certainly. Did you have a proposal where in the agenda would be appropriate? Just under News and Business, maybe at the end of New Business, close to announcements on city-related, so it could flow into other Commissioners?
Yeah.
Gotcha. Gotcha. See, I believe that would, so, see, there's the amendment, so we would add, yeah, we would add that as 10 under New Business. We could do presentation by Donna Chris on, oh, visit to Okeechobee. See, that would make the work session number 11. Are there any other additions or deletions to the agenda at this time from the Commission? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I move that we approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second that.
There has been a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Motion passes. Let's see. At this time, we will move into public input on agenda items. I would ask that anyone who has public comments to offer on any of our agenda items, please step up to the microphone. You'll be given five minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. Now, also, please keep in mind that we have three public hearings this evening, so if you are commenting on any of the topics discussed in the public hearings, that would probably be a more relevant time to speak. And also, please keep in mind that we can't actively answer questions during this period. But again, if you have anything to comment on the items on the agenda, please step forward to the microphone at this time. Not seeing a rush, around one individual here.
Thank you. My name is Tim Bechtel. I live at 1359 Toma Drive. I'm here to talk about the proposed alternate route for the capital improvement project for the bike trail that you're proposing to take through White's Woods. On this handle, and I apologize, the rest of the audience doesn't have this to see, but I propose, instead of going through White's Woods, continuing up through Watson, up Crawford to Watson, and then meeting with the trail at High Street, right where the other trail meets at the traffic signal. I believe this would be a significant cost savings to taxpayers, as engineering and constructing a path through White's Woods would exceed well over a million dollars if it were designed to last the test of time. By going to this route and meeting at that designated location, even if you did designate, even if you did construct the path through White's Woods, it would all already have to come back to their, the ten users would have to go back to that spot at that traffic signal anyways to meet up with the rest of the park systems. So there's already an existing sidewalk that's there, that's well established. It would be easy to replace that sidewalk with this path. To remove it would be very cost effective, as right there is some concrete that would accept all the existing concrete for free. So there's not any, there's not any really cost in removing the existing path. Engineering a path through White's Woods would take away from nature lovers, hikers, runners, field trip, school field trips, senior biology classes, dog walkers, couples, families, photographers. We've seen so many photographers go in there and take families, senior class pictures, and engagement photos. And that would really take away from that, as it would destroy that area, along with winter sledding and et cetera. The path, I truly don't believe it'd stand the test of time with my background in irrigation and drainage. You're going to have to do some significant engineering in order for that to not erode away at the hill and also at the riverbank, where we have already witnessed that from the 25 years that we've lived there, that riverbank has come in to the, to the east a good 50 foot. So it's most likely not going to withstand the test of time. The area that is proposed is not wooded, and so there's a lot of areas where these e-bikes could really wreak havoc in that woods, displace a lot of the wildlife that's there. And as much as we don't like the wildlife eating our landscape, they're here long before us, and we don't feel like it's right to displace them from their homes as a result of that. And by doing, having those e-bikes running through the woods like that, they'll definitely scare them towards traffic areas and what have you. And I don't believe there's going to be any ability for anybody to do any speed limit enforcement. And there'll probably be a significant amount of hit and runs. I mean, I'm a runner, and on the paths that I run in that are existing there, there's been a lot of close calls there just by my running on those paths. The idea, I truly understand the idea to make this accessible to wheelchair users, but a path doesn't really make the woods accessible. They're able to cross through it, but they're not able to access it. And I've actually added a page where you have an all-terrain wheelchair there, and just put a path through there. It's like trying to have, if you have a cherry pie and you have one piece of apple in there and trying to stick your fork in and find that apple, that's, you're not going to get it by putting a path through those woods. The city could easily, with the money that they save by not going through the woods, could purchase an all-terrain wheelchair that they could allow users to use to go through the woods and really explore. Path that they propose goes through a significant flood plain, which makes it inaccessible at certain times of the year due to flooding. And so you'd have to do a major bridge at one of the low parts there, which would be an additional cost. And even though they say that the corner at Toma Center is not going to be a trailhead, that will be where a trailhead is established, because it already has been considered a trailhead by many people in the city. If you go through there at any point in time, day or night, they'll see cars parked out there. Trust me. I can, I can show you the footage. So I really hope you would reconsider this. Right now, throughout government, there's just a really big push for not, for curbing government spending that's wasteful. And I really believe this is wasteful spending at its core. So I think you guys could save a lot of money and put this towards other really good improvement projects, like repainting the lines in this parking lot, for example. So.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate you for giving me the time, and I really hope you'll reconsider.
Thank you, Tim. I appreciate the audience. One reminder that we are having a public hearing on the capital improvement plan, so comments.
Stop.
Comments, yeah.
Do this later.
When, when someone's rolling, I don't want to cut you off and everything, but yeah, public comment during the hearing would be best. No, no, you're good. Let's see. Is there any other items? Jason, we have a hand up? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Justin Carrion. I live on 109 North Arnold Street. I'd like to talk about the bicycles ordinance, chapter 72 specifically on, I thi- I think overall the ordinance is very cut and dry. It's very, nothing spectacular. I'm more concerned on how any of this, hopefully, I wish it will be discussed more today, on how this is going to be enforced, and more importantly, how officers of enforcement are going to be trained, because we do see things like Class 1, Class 2, Class 3, nothing different from anywhere else. But do officers even know how to identify Class 1, Class 2, Class 3? Where is all of this going to be done? Like, I, I just would like to hear more of that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And we, and the discussion on the ordinance will be also one of our public hearings this evening. Is there any other public comment that we have at this time on agenda items? Okay. Seeing none. I'm going to close public comment on agenda items. It'll move into receipt of petitions and communications. Manager, desents?
We do not have any petitions or communications this evening.
Perfect. Thank you. And with that, we'll move into consent items.
Consent items this evening includes approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held May 12, 2025. Consider resolution granting six-month extension for Hayes MP LLC to operate an adult-use recreational retailer establishment at 914 East Pickard Street. Consider setting a public hearing for June 9, 2025 for the, for the purpose of providing the opportunity for public input on the proposed application by Reynolds Gold Fines LLC for a loan in the amount of $15,000 through the CDBG revolving loan fund program, and consider approval of payrolls and warrants.
Thank you. Are there any items in the consent agenda that members of the Commission would like to move into the regular agenda? Commissioner Nuza?
I'd like to remove item three and speak to it after the consent items.
Okay. So item three, consider resolution granting six-month extension for Hayes MP LLC to operate an adult-use recreational retailer establishment in 914 East Pickard Street. Seeing, we would move that into the new business section after the public hearings, so that item number three, we would address before item number nine at the top of New Business. Is there anything else that members of the Commission would like removed out of the consent agenda and into the regular agenda? Seeing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
I move that we accept the consent items as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Before I ask for a vote, I did not. Before I ask a revote, I did not ask if there was any discussion or questions as we usually do. Does anyone have any questions or discussion on any of the items still on the agenda? Not seeing anyone jumping. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Motion passes. Okay. At this time, we will begin our public hearings. We have three public hearings this evening. First one will be a public hearing on the amendment and adoption of chapter seventy-two of the city's code of ordinances entitled bicycles regarding the usage of motorized bikes and scooters on city-owned trails. Before we open up the public comments, would staff like to tee up this discussion?
Yep. So this draft ordinance, before you updates Mount Pleasant's traffic code to regulate both bicycles and electric bicycles, the ordinance outlines where each type of bike can be ridden, whether it's trails or roads, enforces standard traffic laws, and includes safety requirements such as lights, brakes, and signals. It also prohibits class two and class three e-bikes on certain trails. Violations are treated as a civil infraction with fines up to fifty dollars. We do have Public Safety Director Paul Lauria here to answer any questions that you may have on that. And on that point, Director Lauria, was there anything else you wanted to tee up on this one?
No, I'm ready to answer questions.
Perfect. Thank you. Well, with that, we will open the, the public hearing. If you have any comments to give on the proposed ordinance amendment, please step up to the microphone. You'll be given five minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Really addressing you. Good evening. I have reviewed the proposed ordinance on the use of bicycles and scooters within our community, on our streets, and in our parks. I believe there needs to be much more thoughtful discussion on this regulation before approving, especially the corporate for-profit scooter business now allowed to operate in our community. The impact of these transportation methods on our community is apparent. It is not an attractive addition to our city. It impacts certain residential areas more than others, which happens to be the lower-income neighborhoods. It transforms our beautiful walkable nature parks into a racetrack for able-bodied users to zip from point A to point B. It creates litter everywhere in our city where these profit scooters are dumped randomly, on our streets, on our sidewalks, in the right-of-way, and in our parks that explicitly bans motorized vehicles. Our laws, our laws are not followed, and the scooter users do not care where they dump. Allowing personal electric bikes that assist a challenged rider, I can understand. A personally-owned scooter will not be dumped off in front of someone else's house, in our parks, in our streets, on our sidewalks. The corporate-for-profit scooter business you allow do not care how littered our streets and sidewalks become. They do not care if they obstruct passage along a trail, or obviously, nor do their renters. Our sidewalks are for walkable pedestrians and the occasional bicycle. I do not understand the city commission's view on how this makes for a more attractive community, a more walkable community. And this decision makes a real obvious impact on our city. There's plenty of information on the negative impacts from corporate-for-profit scooter businesses that other communities are experiencing. Lansing, Detroit, Ann Arbor, did you not expect those same negative impacts to happen here? According to our state laws, municipalities, cities, and counties have the authority to create their own regulations regarding scooter use within their boundaries, including parks. In Michigan, a governing body can prohibit electric scooters in areas open to pedestrian traffic, on trails under their jurisdiction, or in downtown areas. Scooters and electric bicycles should be prohibited in our local parks. I did not say pedal bikes, but motorized bicycles, bicycles and scooters. You have the power to do that. You should protect our parks for their intended uses. You should also regulate the corporate-for-profit scooter industry in this community. They have no vested interest in this community other than to make money and profit from our walkable routes. They use city-funded sidewalks for their personal commerce space at the expense of our neighborhoods. It is a blight on our community and is a litter on our sidewalks. On the scooters, it states not to leave on the sidewalk, yet that is where they are left. The scooter, scooter users do not adhere to our rules or laws. These for-profit scooters are not returned to a designated area, but left as litter everywhere in what was a beautiful community. They litter our streets, they litter our parks, they litter our sidewalks. This is what I've witnessed with the for-profit scooters. Many scooters are dumped in front of other people's houses after being rented. The users don't want their scooters in front of their houses, so they dump it a block away. It goes to show how the renters of these scooters think. They wanna use it, and then they dump it in front of somebody else's house. They don't want that scooter in front of their house. That is a volatile situation to put neighbors in for no good reason. Do you believe it is okay for someone else to use a scooter but dump it in front of your house? I have seen many scooters sit abandoned for several days in a neighborhood. I don't know what the profit scooter company is telling you on how long they let their scooters sit, but last weekend, one sat in our neighborhood for three days, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. It was finally gone by Monday morning. I have seen this multiple times for multiple days. Do you think this makes an attractive neighborhood? I have also witnessed a scooter in the middle of a sidewalk in the front of a vacant house. It sat there again for three days. I watched a mother with a stroller have to go off the sidewalk into the grass to get around this scooter. Is that safe? What about a wheelchair? Do you expect someone in a wheelchair to do this? Is that, is that the sacrifice you, the city commission, are willing to make for corporate greed? This is a walking community, not a racing community who gives their sidewalks up for commercial use. These scooters obstruct our walkable community, and the commission needs to regulate their abuse. Some knowledge, institutional knowledge, sidewalks were partially paid for by the partial owner way back when. Yes, our taxpayers had to pay a portion for their own sidewalk. We then began to use other sources and not have to charge individual lot owners. Still, the sidewalk money was taxpayer money. I do not believe my taxes should be used to provide corporate business for commercial real estate on my sidewalk. This is not what they are intended for, and they do not respect the real estate. I understand you believe more code enforcement, education, and etiquette standards will be effective. A quick walk through our parks will see the simple etiquette of cleaning up after your dog is not even understood. I wouldn't count on etiquette to be effective. Education that is printed on the scooter doesn't seem to be effective, and how do you plan to educate the rest of the users? Signs, signs everywhere?
Your time has expired.
Can I have thirty more seconds? I enjoy our parks. I have always advocated and protected our parks. We need strong leadership to do this as well. Our parks are to be enjoyed by nature, enjoy nature, and our community does not have to kowtow to corporate needs. This corporate-for-profit scooter business invests nothing into this protected space. They invest nothing into our community. They invest nothing into our neighborhoods. Now the question is, how invested are you?
Thank you. Could you remind us your name?
Lori Gilis, former city commissioner, planning commissioner, lifelong resident of Mount Pleasant.
Thank you.
Well, interesting seating up. Al Montoy, I live at twelve twelve Forest Lane in Mount Pleasant, and have for a long time. Last year, I stood here in front of all of you, and as did many other members of the community, and talked about White's Woods and the history of White's Woods, and the fact that the Dow Foundation gave them the money, the university that gave them the money to preserve that, and that was the intent. Subsequently, there's been a change in attitude. I won't bring all that up again. I'm sure you've heard enough of that. There's no question in my mind that White's Woods is, is a very significant aspect, asset, I should say, to, to the citizens of Mount Pleasant, and I think it should be preserved. So suppose for a moment that we build an asphalt road through the middle of White's Woods. This raises several questions in my mind. Who would use it that doesn't use it now? Where is it accessed? Currently, there's parking at Island Park, at Chippewa Water Park, and that's about all. There is no parking, as Tim Bechtel said, at the center Toma intersection, although they use the streets there from time to time. And one of the things that was brought up was the fact that in the long-range plan, we want to join the Mid-Michigan pathway all the way through Island Park and all the way to the Dog Park and Declare and so on. So this piece right there is a problem, and as Mr. Bechtel pointed out, there's a very good, very simple alternative to this. The pathway that comes from Shepherd right now ends at West Campus Drive. If you continue on West Campus Drive a quarter of a mile, you run into Preston Street. Preston Street to the west of that intersection has no parking on either side of the road available. No parking signs are there. They're also striped so that there's a, a pathway there. If you continue up another quarter of a mile up Preston, you're at Watson. If you turn right on Watson, you're down the hill and you're at High Street Traffic Light, and that's your entry to Island Park. Seems very simple to me that that would be a very efficient way to continue that path. It raises the issue to me a little bit on the safety of Watson Street, where it's posted as twenty-five miles an hour. The city added a flashing sign there that lights up that says twenty-five. Occasionally, somebody goes twenty-five on that, pretty rarely. And so I think there's a safety issue there, but I think that could be handled with barriers and so on for protecting bicycle traffic in there. So if that's the purpose, if that was the reason that you wanted to build an asphalt trail road through White's Woods, I think it's a much better alternative. The, the numbers that were thrown around before were one point eight million, up to two point one million, and I would dare say that within the next two years, there'll be two and a half million dollars spent to build that pathway through White's Woods. When the skateboarders, they are already use Forest Lane and Highland Drive as a little racetrack, they, they get up to the top and they race down. If you build an asphalt trail from Center Street to the river, that's a, probably a hundred feet in vertical. How do you manage the slope of that road so that anybody can use it that's not on a bicycle or their feet? Do you have to change the whole contour of the landscape in order to make that a smooth transition? If you don't, you're gonna have a very steep hill. The skateboarders are gonna think they're in seventh heaven screaming down. They're having a great time, along with the scooters and the bikes and the whole bit. And you've heard about the e-bikes. There's virtually no way, in my mind, that you can enforce the rules on e-bikes. Most people that have e-bikes don't even know if they're a one or a two or a three, and let alone, how do they know they're going ten miles an hour and so on? Time?
Twenty seconds.
Okay. Now, the other thing I wondered about was the liability issue. Does CMU own the property? They do own the property. When there's an accident with a skateboarder and a e-bike and so on, who's, where does the liability fall on this? The, the city is obligated to, to build this trail, and yet they don't own the land. So where does that fall? Just some food for thought. And anyway, just one, one last thought. What does White's look like when the bulldozers and the pavers are done with it? It'll never, it'll never look like it does now, and it'll never go back. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Reminder, a quick reminder, folks, we are talking specifically on this, right now, public hearing on the amendment and adoption of chapter seventy-two of the city's code of ordinances entitled bicycles regarding the usage of motorized bikes and scooters on city-owned trails. We will be having a discussion on the public, public hearing on the twenty twenty-six, twenty thirty-one proposed capital improvement plan, which includes the G K B trail as men, mentioned previously, trying to keep things focused on motorized bikes and scooters on city-owned trails and the amendments to that, though, I want to say.
Gotcha. Hi, my name is Chantal Margar. I live at eight oh five Hopkins Street. I did come here as a resident, a neighbor, and a nature lover to talk about White's Woods. Our whole neighborhood has come in support of that, so I recognize what you just said, but if you wouldn't mind, I just would like to give a few words. If you've ever taken a walk through White's Woods, you know it's not just a park, it's a sanctuary. It's a place where you can still hear the wind move through the trees, where footprints fade gently into the soil, where peace is not a luxury, it's a part of the landscape. The sign at the entrance reads, "Leave only footprints, take only pictures." That is not just a motto, it's a promise, a promise that is in place and will remain untouched, natural and free. To pave White's Woods is to break that promise. Pavement may seem like progress, but here it would be a disruption. This is one of the last places in our town where nature has not been shaped by human hands. Paving it would silence the crunch of the leaves beneath our feet and replace it with the heat and hardness of asphalt. And it's not just about aesthetics or nostalgia, it's about the ecosystem as well. Paved surfaces disrupt water drainage, introduce pollutants, and alter the soil. They change the temperature of the ground, affecting plant life and harming the delicate balance of the forest. And let's not forget the animals, especially the dogs who walk there with their owners every day. Pavement in the summer can burn their paws. What is now a cooling shade refuge would become a scorching hazardous path. We don't need to pave this path to improve it. It's value lives and what it is not. It is not a sidewalk, it is not a street, it is not developed. That is the beauty of it. As a community, we should ask, who are we becoming if we pave over peace, if we trade in nature for convenience and the one place that's meant to remain wild? White's Wood is a rare treasure. Once it's paved, we cannot go back. So we urge you, please do not pave this path. Let it remain a place where the wild things are, where peace has a home, where our children and their children can experience something real, raw, and untouched. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there additional comments on the amendment and adoption of chapter seventy-two of the city's code of ordinances entitled bicycles regarding the usage of motorized bikes and scooters on city-owned trails at this time? Okay. Are there, is there anyone online? Any emails? Any emails, Jason? Thank you. Not seeing anyone else rushing up to the microphone. I'm gonna close this public hearing, and we'll move into discussion from the city commission. So we are again discussing, we've had two work sessions now, three, one last year also on this potential ordinance here. Thoughts from the commission discussion, or is there anyone who would be comfortable making a motion at this time? Commissioner Bush?
I was fairly sure we discussed getting some usage data and from the, from the e-commerce bikes, or sorry, scooters, that we were gonna, you know, finish this past year and, and get some data on that. As far as I can recall, I do not believe we ever received any kind of report. And I just wanna know if that has been pursued or, or whatnot.
I know, off the top of the head, from city staff, if there's any updates on like reporting on electric usage for scooters?
I'll have to get back to the city commission on that one. Off the top of my head, no.
Thank you. Commissioner, or Vice Mayor, okay?
I have a question, maybe it's a comment. Director Lauria, on the ordinance seventy-two point one eight, talking about speed, it says, I can't activate my thing. You know, in terms of description of speed greater, speed greater than is reasonable and prudent. And I mean, that's kind of ambiguous. What does that mean? How does one interpret that?
Well, it, it would mean that if there's a, there's a group of people and the, the trail is very packed, is it reasonable and prudent to pedal the bike as hard as you can through the people? If there's nobody else on the trail or the pathway, you know, can you go faster? Sure, you can. But you gotta be cautious, watching for other users of the trail. Or the path, I should say.
I have a follow-up question. I mean, I know that we discussed speed in the past and, you know, considered whether to assign a certain, you know, speed limit or not. And it seemed to me as if, I think we generally came to the point that maybe not. But I wanna be reminded of what the speed limit is, or at least the speed. yeah, the extent or the speed range is for Class 1, you know, Class 1 bikes, Class 2 bikes, and Class 3 bikes.
The, the bikes in the classes, you have to remember Class 1, in order to get any of the electric assist benefit, you have to be pedaling. Okay? If you stop pedaling, the electric assist stops. So the Class 1 bike requires the rider to pedal in order to get the benefit of the electric motor, I guess, is, is the best way to say it. As far as Class 2 bikes, well, Class 1 can go up to 20 miles per hour. Class 2 bike is, is the same thing, but the, the bike does not have to be pedaled. Okay? And it can go up to 20 miles per hour. And Class 3 bike is totally throttle-controlled, can go up to 28 miles per hour.
Commissioner Zhang?
Thank you.
I wanted to thank some of these speakers for coming, being involved. These are important decisions. And I'm probably on the minority at the Commission right now, but I think it's important to recognize that, that the idea of paving these things is to make a connection to the other parts of the state, up to Ethica, through Shepherd, up to Claire, the paths through Weitz Woods.
Commissioner Zhang? It's just reminding you that the Weitz Woods discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
But I'm talking about the paths through the parks, including the plan for Weitz Woods will allow bicycles. And we're going to invite hundreds, maybe thousands of bikes to be used as a thoroughfare from now on. And when you motorize the vehicles, it creates other problems. And I'm glad some of those people recognize that. And I think that as the Commission, we need to remember that it's not, that we or I would be against motorized bikes. In fact, they're a fun kind of a thing, but in our parks, that's probably not the place for them. The city, the trails that go through the parks were built there and tended to be trails in the park, not a thoroughfare for motorized vehicles.
Other members of the Commission discussion questions? Commissioner Bush?
I would just like some clarity from Director Loria on the 72.23, where it talks about riding on sidewalks and then the signs that are going to be placed?
No, I, I think that, let me just get to that part. I think you're misreading it.
Oh, okay.
It says, "If signs are erected at my discretion." So if I put signs up, is what I'm recalling. Give me the
Is author, okay. The Director of Public Safety, or his/her designee, is authorized to erect signs on any sidewalk, street, or roadway prohibiting the riding of bicycles or electric bicycles thereon by any person, and when such signs are in place, no person shall disobey the same.
Yeah.
So, okay, so that means if there's a sign, you can't disobey it.
That's correct.
So does that, so we, but we're not talking about where those signs are going to be. How, like, how are decisions made about?
It would be, it, the ordinance has it in there to provide the authority to erect an sign immediately if we deem necessary. And that the sign, then, once installed, if you violate it, then you're held responsible for violating the sign. So it's, it's in there to be used, it's not being used at this time.
Okay, so theoretically, though, it could be applied, you know, if there was an area that became of concern with dangerous e-bike traffic?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Commissioner Al Sager, did I?
Well, just my comment that at the beginning of the ordinance, it's written up what are Class 1, Class 2, and Class 3, and then way down farther in the ordinance, it says only Class 1 electric bikes are permitted, correct?
Yeah, and ordinances are typically written that way. The definitions go up at the top of the ordinance, the rules then follow.
Commissioner?
And I would also say that the heading of that section for you, Commissioner Bush, is riding on sidewalks.
Right, that's
So, so paths, I would say, are not sidewalks.
Ah, okay.
So I, I just want to make sure you understand how I interpret it.
That might be an important definition then, too. Sidewalk versus path.
Well, I mean, we can, if you want it on paths.
If we, I mean, we could add on paths and include that in the definitions in the beginning, because that's, seems to be part of the primary concern when it comes to enacting this ordinance is not so much the vehicle, but the location of the vehicle.
Are you saying, suggesting an amendment, like amending it further, or?
Oh, I'm suggesting perhaps including a definition of, of sidewalk and path, and then adding path when you talk about, when it says riding on sidewalks, you could say riding on sidewalks and paths, and then give that allowance for public safety to allow enforcement on paths. Does that make sense, or is it redundant?
Director Loria, looks like you had a
No, I, I was having a little technological problem. My computer, I have it zoomed so big, I can see like one paragraph, and then I move it a smudge in it, and it goes to the end of the ordinance. If you could restate, I'm sorry.
So if we included definitions of sidewalk and path, you know, and then, and then allow for, and then amendment on riding on sidewalks, if that amendment was riding on sidewalks and paths, then you're covering some more
Yes.
area, and that seems to be one of the primary concerns when it comes to, to this ordinance, is not so much necessarily the vehicle type, but the vehicle, but about where it's being ridden.
Correct, yeah, we, we can add that. That doesn't mean that we would erect the signs and, and put them up.
No, no, but it gives you that.
But I wouldn't have to come back
Right.
to this body in order to do that.
Does that, does any other Commission members have any thoughts on that?
It makes sense to me, yeah.
Add additional definitions, okay.
Maybe a C in 72.23.
Okay.
For definitions. Yeah, Commissioner Eke?
Okay. Related to Commissioner Bush's comments, actually, I was wondering if there is a possibility of indicating somewhere are they, you know, in the, on the path, what, you know, there's a language where it says only Class 1 bicycles are allowed. Because not everybody necessarily knows, you know, who is going to use that path would know the distinction between Class 1 and Class 2 and Class 3. Until you explain that to me, I would have absolutely no idea what that entails. So just to be safe, indicate in there somewhere, only Class 1, whatever it is that Class 1 is, you know, sort of. Or, you know, again, this is where that speed limit, you know, speed limit comes in, because you've indicated the speed limit for these classes right at the very beginning. I don't see the harm of indicating somewhere a sign that says Class 1 no more than 20 miles an hour. Well, you know, something like that, just to be safe.
You're, you're expressing that to be out on the path?
Yes.
Okay, yes. Okay, yeah.
That is if we agree on this, you know, so, yes.
Well, that, when you say only Class 1, will you also say, and, and they have to have a speedometer? Because how do they know how fast they're going? You can go 20, 30 miles an hour, especially downhill.
Well, you don't need an actual working speedometer in a vehicle, let alone a, on a bike. And, and so what, what is relied upon is the, the driver's knowledge and experience. And, and so if you, if you want to put a speed limit or a speed limit requirement in there, it's their responsibility to make sure that they're going that, not exceeding that speed limit. So, I mean, you can do that.
What, what happens if we added, and, and I'm thinking about, you know, Weitz Woods in a way, actually, because in Weitz Woods, it says no motorized vehicles, right? So you have defined, you have defined, you know, there's a sign that says that, even though, you know, it's small, people ignore it. I want a sign that people will see. They won't pretend that they didn't see it, all right? So, no, seriously, right? That says, hey, what is this, you know? No, what is it? Class 2, whatever, however you define it, you know, that, you know, non-human propelled, however you define it, those are not, they are prohibited in, you know, on the path. Because then people can see it clearly. I'm just, you know, here's my concern, as somebody who walks through, you know, you know, our paths, you know, our parks all the time. I have said this over and over, that, you know, I have had near misses where somebody has sort of zapped past me, and I'm thinking, oh my God, you know, well, they didn't ring their bell, they didn't say on your right, on your left, nothing. They just simply zapped past, and I'm screaming like, excuse me? Of course they didn't hear me. So I think it is important for us to, you know, make sure that both pedestrians and whoever else is riding a bike on that, you know, on the path might, you know, you know, would be safe. Let's figure out how we do this, so that it's, you know, it's, 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 you know, available to everybody who wants to use it. Minus horses. Unlike horses, but, you know, maybe that's
Checking in on other Commissioners. Commissioner Rollins, any comments or discussions?
Well, instead of making the sign that's saying no Class 2 or Class 3, why don't we just have a sign saying no motorized bikes?
Yeah, I'm okay with that, yeah. I'm fine, I am fine with that, as long as this language that says no human motorized, however you want to frame it.
I mean, because nobody, I mean, none of the people that are riding motorized bikes are actually watching this. But if we just put down on a sign and, you know, legible and large enough to be seen from a distance, no motorized bikes, I mean, I
I will support that.
Yeah, that should, you know, suffice, right? I mean, to me, it's like keeping it simple.
Yeah.
That, that's for the direction of the Commission here, saving you there, Director Loria. So if we decided that we wanted to craft an ordinance banning electric bikes, motorized bikes completely, we could do so. And that's, I want to make sure I ask again Commissioner Perschbacher's any thoughts from herself also. But working with this, we could vote to turn this down, we could do an additional work session and re-craft this if we wanted to. So it'll just depend on the motion that we take and that we as the Commission decide upon there. So that's feedback that we could work with. Again, rounding out conversation, Commissioner Perschbacher, any comments or feedback that you'd like to give at this time?
Not at this time.
Okay. With that, yeah, so we've heard a mix of conversation. It sounds like there's additional work that the Commissioner, the Commission might want to go back to as far as either ironing out definitions. Sounds like there's some interest in potentially revisiting what electric bikes, if any, we allow. So with that, I might recommend a motion that indicates desire for a work session on this, as it is still a topic that we're addressing. But I would entertain a motion at this time from the Commission.
I move that we have another work session on this. Is that what you're asking, or are you trying to reject this?
I'm asking for a motion, so if your motion is, my, my recommendation would be if it's a motion to reject this, that we might, as part of that, request for a work session to go along with that motion.
I move that we not accept the ordinance as currently written, but schedule another work session to address concerns.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Clerk Wixson, do I, I don't need a roll call vote on this, it's just a general regular vote. My first public hearing, so I just want to double check.
Ordinances require roll call vote.
Roll call vote, thank you. I asked. There's been a motion.
We need two motions then.
Well, no, there's a motion and a second. We can move into the roll call vote at this time, I believe. Is there any additional discussion on the motion at this time?
I appreciate the comments from Commissioner Rollins.
In that case, Clerk Wixson, if you'd please call the roll.
Commissioner Al Sager?
Please, please indicate, so the motion, support for the motion would be indicated by aye, opposition to the motion would be nay.
I think the way it was stated was to reject the motion.
To reject the ordinance order.
The motion was to reject.
Reject the ordinance.
Yeah, so
So I, I agree with rejecting the ordinance.
Yes.
So I
Thank you.
Commissioner Perschbacher?
Aye.
Commissioner Zhang?
Aye.
Commissioner Rollins?
Aye.
Commissioner Bush?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Eke?
Aye.
Mayor Wingard?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Make it count.
Commissioner Zhang?
The people who are here tonight have heard what is happening. It's not the end issue, it's going to be discussed further. Your participation tonight went a long way. And I hope you explore that, what's written on, on the paperwork. Take a look at it. If it's the kind of thing that you think input should be given, tell your neighbors about it and let the Commission know. This is an important topic for our parks. Thank you.
And before, I want to just thank you, Commissioner Al Sager. We discussed further previously on clarity of voting aye, nay on that. So thank you for that, calling that out there. Okay, at this time, we'll move into item number seven, which is a public hearing on Community Development Block Grant Water-Related Infrastructure Program Application and Consider Approval of Resolution on the Same. The public hearing on 2026-2031 Proposed Capital Improvement Plan is still the next session. So if you're coming up, I expect to hear something on the Community Development Block Grant Water-Related Infrastructure Program. With that, Director Moore, I believe you're going to tee us up with some information here.
Yes, I have just a short presentation for the Commission explaining the process and the project that we've got planned, if I can find it. Uh, if I can find. Sorry about that. So like I said, this is just a short presentation on the community development block grant, uh, water-related infrastructure uh, application that we put together here at the city. And this is for the public hearing on that subject. So just an overview, I'm going to go over the project need, uh, the proposed project, project cost, the, uh, the grant itself, I'll talk a little bit about that, and then, uh, next steps. And then, uh, there'll be, uh, room for questions. So the project need, this is to replace, uh, uh, sledge drying beds at the, uh, water resource recovery facility along with the holding tank A, uh, for the biosolids. Part of the plant's biosolids handling capabilities are tied up with that tank. Uh, it allows us to, uh, keep that, um, uh, those biosolids and dry them out essentially. Uh, makes it, so it's easier to, uh, have a product that you can actually spread on the, uh, farm fields in the area. Um, drying beds, uh, they date back to the, uh, original construction of the plant, so, uh, from the fifties. Um, they're not very functional in their current configuration, as well as they're, of course, is, you know, seventy years old, so um, they're showing their age. This grant, if, if, uh, we were awarded this grant, then, uh, we, we would be able to replace that infrastructure entirely. And some of the things related to the grant that helps us out as far as, uh, scoring, um, our, our water resource recovery facility, uh, serves, um, fifty, fifty-eight percent of the service area is low to moderate income, uh, individuals. And, uh, also, of course, there'll be zero, uh, persons displaced by this project being those inside the fence. It'll offer the demolition of the sledge drying beds and, and construction of new beds, um, that will be similarly designed to the current ones. But, um, uh, they'll have a more modern, uh, uh, way of allowing for that sledge to dry out. Uh, it'll also allow for the demolition of the current, uh, um, holding tank A, um, with precast concrete, uh, with a precast concrete tank, uh, ten feet tall. Uh, it'll include access hatches, uh, it'll include a, um, uh, some pit, uh, in the bottom of that tank and, uh, the, uh, pumping equip, equipment that goes with that. Uh, and then, of course, these improvements will, uh, allow for the plant to continue to operate. Uh, like I said, the biosolids, being able to field apply those biosol, biosolids is very important to our operation because it, it provides a, uh, 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 environmentally friendly way to get rid of that, uh, waste rather than taking it to a landfill, which is what some, some facilities have to do. And this is just a, uh, overall view of the, uh, WRF site. And the area that we're talking about is to the west there, uh, the hatched area on the screen. And I've got some pictures here, they're not great, but it is what it is. Um, this is the sledge drying, uh, bed. And it, it was scheduled for rehabilitation this year, uh, but the grant funding will allow us to completely replace that. And like I said, with a more modern, um, functioning drying bed. And then this is, uh, this is, uh, sledge, holding tank A, and it really just looks like a mound of dirt because it's an underground, uh, storage tank, so. And this was scheduled to be replaced in twenty, well, the lid was scheduled to be replaced in twenty twenty-eight. And again, the grant funding would allow us to replace that entire, uh, uh, piece of infrastructure. Project costs, uh, provided by CDBG, if awarded, would be two point five million dollars. Um, the city's match on that would be two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And again, that was, um, uh, funds that were scheduled to be used anyway, uh, for these two improvements. Uh, as far as the grant itself goes, it's set up for, uh, uh, units of general local government, uh, in making necessary improvements to existing public infrastructure systems, systems. Uh, eligible activities include upgrading existing public infrastructure systems, either by replacing deteriorating or obsolete systems or by adding needed capacity to existing but burdened systems. And we would fall into that first category there, where we, we're just replacing the deteriorating, uh, and obsolete systems. Uh, next steps will be, if, uh, the resolution is approved tonight, uh, will be to submit the application, uh, on the thirtieth, so Friday. Um, and, uh, we'll receive a determination on the grant, uh, in fairly quick order, uh, by June twentieth. And then, uh, we would hope to start construction, uh, May thirty-first of twenty twenty-six and complete it, uh, by November, uh, first of twenty twenty-six. And that's, uh, all I've got, unless there are questions.
Any questions from the commission? Commissioner, or Vice Mayor Eke?
Director Moore, I, I appreciate the work you do. I appreciate the work your unit does. Um, and, you know, you gave us a tour a while ago to show us what you're doing. And so I will support this without hesitation because it's needed, it's necessary.
I appreciate that.
Commissioner Zhang.
I move.
Oh, no. We have a public hearing still.
We have to, yep.
Yep, we'll have the public hearing and then you'll be able to jump on that. Other members with questions for Director Moore at this time before we begin the public hearing? Thank you, Jason.
Just checking to make sure there's nobody on Zoom. There is not.
Okay, no one on Zoom, no emails on the topic. Is there anyone in the public audience, or in the, in the public audience who would, um, like to comment on this topic? Would be on the community development block grant, water-related infrastructure program. Okay. Not seeing anyone racing up to the podium, um, I will go ahead and close public, uh, comments or the public hearing on this topic. Um, is there any further discussion on this from the commission or is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, uh, that we move, uh, move to approve the resolution, uh, to approve the application for the community development block grant for water-related infrastructure program.
I'll second it.
There is a motion and a second, any further discussion? Commissioner Zhang.
We really need that at the, at the treatment plant.
Okay. Yeah, so on, the motion on the table is to approve the resolution and the application for the grant, uh, for the grants. Um, voting aye would indicate support for the motion, voting nay would indicate support against the motion. I believe we need a roll call vote, Clerk Wixson, if you would take the roll.
Commissioner Bush.
Aye.
Commissioner Al Sager.
Aye.
Commissioner Bershbocker.
Aye.
Commissioner Zhang.
Aye.
Commissioner Rollins.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Eke.
Aye.
Mayor Wingard.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, and. Gotcha, all right, moving on to the item number eight. We will be having the long-awaited public hearing on twenty twenty-six, twenty thirty-one proposed capital improvement plan. Director Lauren Pavloski, I believe you are going to be teeing us up on this topic.
Okay. So I did prepare a shorter presentation than what you saw a couple of weeks ago, um, related to the capital improvement plan. Um, this is just a recap to make sure that our public understands some of the projects that we have going on for this. Uh, tonight's overview of the projects, um, will focus heavily on what's planned for the twenty twenty-six year, but we'll also talk about, um, some of the twenty twenty-five plans that are in place right now. Some changes, um, from the prior plans, the summary of the projects and the remaining CIP, um, steps for this. Um, the information from this CIP that we have that we're working on right now will be used to develop our twenty twenty-six um, operating budget, so it is pertinent that we finalize these plans and be able to move forward with our operating budget for the next fiscal year. Um, and I do have the link for the CIP for anybody that is interested in viewing the full document available online. Um, just as a quick reminder, characteristics of a CIP project, it's original construction or subsequent improvement of um, something that we have, equipment with an estimated useful life of ten years or more, the cost of at least twenty thousand dollars in projects that are spanning multiple years. Um, I did, um, keep the slide related to our twenty twenty-five projects. These projects are, um, planned to be completed within twenty twenty-five. Some projects have been started and completed, some are in process and others will be started later this year. Um, this is quite an extensive list, but just so people have an idea of what we're currently working on. Um, the next slide will look at some of the general funds projects that we have going on right now. We have a building, um, our building department is looking at projects totaling one point four million dollars. And that includes windows and door replacement for City Hall at sixty-six thousand and the retaining wall for one point four million. The city clerk is looking for projects for totaling a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and that's for election replacement equipment for our eight election um, equipment that we have. And our public works is looking for three hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars worth of projects um, related to sidewalk replacement for a hundred and fifty thousand and storm sewer collection system improvements for a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. And these are all for twenty twenty-six projects. In our special revenue funds, we have our downtown, which we're looking at two hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars worth of projects for the alleyway renovations for two hundred and sixty-six thousand and downtown improvement program for thirty thousand. We have our parks department, which is two point nine million. We have the Chippewa River Bank Protection, um, project for six hundred and ten thousand, a medium-sized project for fifty-four thousand. Uh, the GKB pathway connections for two point one million, the playground equipment and universal access for forty thousand and the renovation of the parks and road, uh, uh, park roads, lots and trails for a hundred and forty-five thousand. And we also have a major street project for resurfacing and reconstruction for two point one million. I did want to note that the GKB pathway plan current, um, that is currently in the CIP is just a possible plan that includes the, um, Vitzwood pathways and that is subject to change depending on the work session that's planned in Q three. So we do still have some more talk to do, and I know a lot of you people are here related to the Vitzwood side of things, so I just want to bite wood, sorry. I'm not a Mount Pleasant native, I do apologize, so. Bite wood. So just so you do know that this is something that the work session is planned in Q three for that, but we're more than happy to hear your conversations on that. Um, next I look at the enterprise funds for twenty twenty-six. And we have the airport for three point four million, and that is a runway renovation for three point two million and snow removal equipment for two hundred and thirty thousand. We have our water fund that's looking at projects for five hundred and sixty-eight thousand, which includes a chemical feed pump replacement for forty thousand, distribution system replacement for sixty thousand, meter replacement for three hundred and forty-eight thousand and source water equipment replacement for a hundred and twenty thousand. And we have our water resource recovery facility looking at seven hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars worth of projects, including facility improvements for two hundred and seventy-five thousand, lift station improvements for seventy-four thousand, meter replacements for three hundred and forty-eight thousand and reconstruction and relining project for a hundred thousand. We have, um, future year projects that we're looking at, um, that include ongoing recurring projects. Uh, we have street reconstruction, sidewalk projects, these are all for twenty-seven through thirty-one. And these will be, again, talked about when we do our next year, our next one as well. But, um, these are some of the projects that we have planned for future years, um, in our CIP. And then we also do have our bigger projects for twenty-seven through thirty-one, which include downtown streetscape, vehicle storage shelter and runway rehab as well. And, um, we do have the public hearing tonight. We do have a required adoption of the CIP by June ninth, and this will be incorporated into our operating budget that will be submitted to the board by September eighth for review. Any questions?
Just wanting to clarify, make sure, clarify to the commission because um, we have the adoption deadline of June ninth, but we are able to take, make that adoption tonight if we are comfortable with that. I believe I discussed that manager to send, so again, following the public hearing and any additional discussion, we can have that, that adoption this evening, um, with the deadline being June ninth per our charter. It's less of a question, I suppose, but I kind of was looking for confirmation there. Other questions from the commission? Commissioner Bush?
I, I, I apologize, I do not have this, this information. Um, but do, the, the, the organization that, um, the, um, Commissioner Al Sager, can you remind me the name of the organization? The.
Uh, Community Pathway.
Yes, Community Pathways, thank you. Um, the Community Pathways organization, is this something, you know, we're doing this in cooperation with them, right? And they, they are paying for some of it, that you're talking about for, for ten, for the? Is that?
The through town.
Yes, the through town part? Or maybe that's for you?
Um, we are working with them on the pathway connections, but they're not paying for any of it in, in our section.
Okay.
Um, and the, just for clarification too, the twenty twenty-six project is the one that's going to go from Nelson to, um, Mission Creek. The one that's later is the one that we're still working on alternatives, so that'll be brought to you guys later in the year.
Uh, because I, I mean, I, I, I know that we've had conversations as a commission and I, maybe it's a relevant to make comment as a commission as to like what our thoughts are on, um, the proposed pathway through White Woods, because I, I don't know if we've ever really openly discussed it in a meeting. And if the mayor, um, would support it, I think it might be relevant to just have a discussion very specifically about that issue before we receive comment.
Well, like I said, we're going to have a total conversation about it when we have the alternative routes brought up. So it'll be, it'll be a separate discussion.
We already are considering alternative routes.
Yes.
Yes, that's.
Based on our last conversation, that's what I was asked to do was bring back alternative routes.
Yeah, that, that, that was my impression.
Yes.
Yes, we are already considering alternative routes. Yeah.
Gotcha.
All right. I think that pretty much covers what I wanted to discuss.
Other questions for staff before we open up the public hearing? Well, Commissioner Bush, was that good as a part of your request of?
Yeah, I just want the public to be clear that we, we share, I mean, I know I, as a commissioner, share concerns already brought up. Um, and, um, I think that other commissioners also share your concerns and that is why. that is why we actually, we, as Director Riscord said, that is why we requested alternative routes to be considered. So approving this capital plan is not going to approve construction through White's Woods. That's not what's happening tonight. So it, it, it is. It's including the discussion of this Community Pathways Trail, but it's not something that's going to be done in 2026, the White's Woods Pathway. And in fact, we are already researching other alternative routes. So yeah, I, I think there might've been some miscommunication.
Questions for staff before we begin the public hearing. We will have additional discussion after.
Question. Uh, question is, I'm going to assume that if we decide to take White's Woods out of this plan. Okay. So I, I want to know how much it will change that particular amount that you showed, um, at 2.1 million.
I believe the White's Wood, is that 2028? Okay. So that's not going to affect the 2.
So it's not going to, okay.
It's not the 2026 project. It's the 2028, the future years project.
Okay. Well, because my, you know, I hope I didn't hear you incorrectly. Cause when you were talking about that mid Michigan GKB pathway connections, you did say, you know, it includes.
Yep.
White's Woods.
It's because that, um, that GKB pathways is listed in the CIP twice. It's in 2026 as well as in 2028.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah. So it's the 2028 side of things that has the White's Woods in it, not the 2026 side.
So the amount in here right now does not include the amount that would be designated for anything having to do with.
The 2.1 million has nothing to do with White's Woods.
Okay. All right. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Lauren. All right. At this time, I will open up the public hearing. Um, on the 2026, 2031 proposed capital improvement plan. If you wish to comment, please step up to the podium. You'll be given five minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Um, I'm the Lawrence. I speak for the trees. I'm Ari Berg. I live at 916 Center Drive. Um, I'd like to address the issue of White's Woods, as I'm sure many of my neighbors have done and will also continue to do. Um, I bought my house because of White's Woods. We were looking at the house on center and I wondered what was behind the little blockade at the end of the street. And while my, uh, wife was talking to the realtor, I went down there and looked. And when I saw that there was a nature preserve at the end of the driveway, I knew that this is where I wanted to live. My son, who just graduated from CMU, grew up in those woods from the time even before he could walk. And the thing that makes the woods so special is that, um, at the time even it wasn't connected to anything else. The bridge has brought a few more people in there, but it's important to share special spaces, I recognize. I, I wanted to share with you a few of my thoughts about this. Some a little more formal and some more personal. One, White's Woods is a nature preserve. It's designated as a nature preserve by CMU and it's posted as such on all of its signs. For some odd reason, the previous administration forgot their obligation to maintaining that nature preserve by the, uh, facilitation of this discussion about changing the nature of White's Woods. We no longer have that president and we're under no obligation to honor that, that inquiry. Um, and I don't think that we should. I heard through the grapevine that people were asked about this from the president. I was never asked and I cannot find anybody else who was asked about it. But apparently the idea was bandied about and then came forward. I'm very pleased, however, that this commission now has the authority to dispense with that part of the plan moving forward that would affect White's Woods. Um, it is foremost a, a nature preserve. Um, a trail going through there would harm the nature preserve in a variety of ways. Uh, number one, I have been subject to bicycle abuse on more than one occasion. And I'm all for people having the use of, of most of the spaces in town for bicycle riding. I've been struck three times by bicycles and bikes, mostly during the, uh, autumn, the, before the end of autumn, late summer, when the trees make it a little difficult to see around the corners. Um, they were all by people, uh, who were wearing earbuds, who were not listening for anybody else. And I expect that that behavior would not only continue, but be exacerbated by the current plans. Uh, I have also found, uh, wildlife that has been, um, injured and killed by bicycles. I have seen, uh, bicycle mountain bike tracks go right through the middle of frogs, young turtles and numerous snakes who come out to sun themselves on the path and would most certainly make use of, uh, an asphalt trail. So those are some things I think that we should definitely, um, consider. In addition, if the soil is disturbed by the, uh, grading and paving of a path, it's going to open the sides of that trail up to various invasive plant species, opportunistic plant species such as buckthorn and autumn olive, which are a problem. So there's that to think about. Um, I think, I, I won't say anything about the other alternatives. I think an extremely workable and frugal financial alternative has been presented to the commission. So I'll leave that aside. Uh, I'd just like to say personally, as someone who, um, has lived for 25 years and walked in those woods on most days. It is an extremely unique and special place, both to this town and also locally. I understand the enthusiasm of a proposal that links Mount Pleasant to other places in the state of Michigan. But I think this is a, a, a story that is actually really not, not worth what it ultimately accomplishes since there are other ways to connect to that pathway. Um, if you have spent time in White's Woods, and if you haven't, if any of the members of the commission or anybody else has not, I encourage you to go there and walk, particularly in the early morning and the late afternoon. And you will see in just within an hour that there is nothing at all that needs improvement, um, in that space. It's a jewel of this town. I understand we want to make sure that we have as much use open to everybody as possible. But White's Woods is really something special. And if for a moment CMU has stumbled and forgotten to remember its obligation to protecting that designated nature preserve, I would hope that this commission would step in and serve as a, a, a quick and efficient reminder of that obligation. Um, last thing I think I just would like to emphasize is that it is a place that offers an opportunity to feel something quite different from what most of us experience in our daily life. White's Woods is a slow place. It's a meditative place. We don't have very many places like that. As a 25 year vetting teacher at CMU, I can tell you my students, many students have benefited from that, from the mental health uh, opportunities that a place like that gives you that's within walking, are obligated to live within walking distance of White, White's Woods. So I'd like to continue to encourage them to take advantage of that place. Thank you very much for your time.
Are there any other members of the audience?
Hello, my name is Aiden Koshchesha. I live at 1351 Toma Drive. And, um, many of my neighbors have also spoken about White's Woods and how special it is, and I agree with them and, um, I want to add something personal from my family. Today, before I came here, I took my five-year-old to swimming lessons. We just moved to Mount Pleasant two years ago and we live just two houses down from, um, the access to White's Woods. And it has been one of the joys of my coming to Mount Pleasant to be able to walk with my child in that natural space. After school on the weekends, you have a little bit of a quiet place, uh, to reflect. And when I told him about this proposed plan, um, and told him what I felt about it and told him that I was going to speak here tonight. He, uh, spoke very eloquently and sweetly to me about why he also would not like White's Woods to be paved. And I said to him, would you record that so that I could play it for, uh, the city council? And he said to me, but I'm just a kid. The city council wouldn't listen to me. And I said, of course they will. You are the person the city council wants to hear from most. And so if you don't mind, I'm sorry, it's on my phone. I'd like to play you 17 seconds of Aster Koshchesha, who also lives at 1351 Toma Drive.
Don't pave the road. Cause I like the nature. I just like.
Thank you.
Ray Davies at, uh, 1338 South Crawford Street, um, few, few doors down from Center Street and also near White's Woods. Uh, not much to add here, but, um, s- I'm going to s- say, starting out, I, uh, speaking as a bike person. I love the Mid Michigan Pathway. I've done a lot of the rail trails around the state. Um, ridden around Milwaukee, ridden around Minneapolis, St. Paul. But I don't think this is a good idea to make this linkage because I love White's Woods too. And, um, it's a unique and sensitive natural area. I walked there this morning and I saw 10 turtles, one snake, two bluebirds. There's a beautiful bluebird meadow there. Um, a lot of different habitats, a bullfrog and an eastern phoebe. So you see a lot of different habitats that would be damaged by this paving project. And loss of habitat, um, damage especially during construction, I believe. I mean, cause I think what's the path, uh, to eight, 10 feet, but then you've got all the stuff you have to do on the sides of that, um, as well. And there would be a possibility for, um, flood down, damage and erosion as, uh, Tim Bechtel mentioned earlier. Um, so, uh, I, I have a couple of concerns too. I feel like it was maybe 10 years, 10 or 12 years ago that CMU took a more active interest in the bike, in the, in White's Woods. And there was, uh, landscape cloth put down along the river there. Um, there was, um, wood chips on the trails. There's been very little trail maintenance, uh, protection, um, measures to enhance White's Woods in recent years that I'm aware of. And I think that, uh, I've often thought, gee, there ought to be a friends of White's Woods group or something. And maybe some of the people here, we might think about that. But, um, also I think that there are good alternatives to connect the, uh, Michigan, Mid Michigan, uh, you've got Watson Street, you've got Glenn, you've got Wendro to get to that corner. And I think if, if we're gonna, if 2 million is going to be spent, it would be far better to spend it on maintaining White's Woods as it is to prevent erosion, to maintain the trails and also to think about that corner. Maybe, maybe have a crossing of High Street on the right side of Watson as you're going down the hill. I've been in some cities where you see a little bike icon on the walk signal. You know, so we don't, I've almost run into a bicyclist making a right turn on High, High Street, going up the hill on Watson. And a bicycle will just be coming around right in that little right turn area, not really on the sidewalk. Ah, I had to stop and, um, but that might be a, another thing. Maybe there's a way to make it a better crossing for bicyclists at that corner. So that's, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Francis Lipman. I live at 1212 Tama Drive. These are my neighbors and I agree with everything they've said. The one thing I would mention with regard to the capital improvement plan is on page 41, you have a map that describes a quote proposed trail through and takes you right through White's Woods down center, down Crawford, down Brimfield. And if in, and, and in fact, there's been an enormous amount of talk about paving these woods. CMU has given an easement already for you. This is a totally misguided project. And so when you approve the CIP, which I'm sure you will, please remove page 41. Because it implies that that's what you're going to do. And rather than keep you any later tonight, I'm not going to give you the other 10 reasons why you shouldn't do this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Martin Notstein, uh, 1361 South Crawford Street. I had to take a lot out that I had in my speech, so it's even a little bit shorter. And I don't know that I could do any better than this gentleman right here, cause he was fantastic. Um, uh, you make the, the park idea, you made it seem like we, we had to get this done by June 9th and said, oh my goodness, what, what has got to be so done so quickly? And, and it bothered me that the public meeting is pushed onto this holiday weekend in a time slot on a Tuesday when nobody pays attention. And so I, I'm surprised there's as many people here as there are. I'm really glad and amazed. Uh, but how can this generation not use the White's Woods area in the way it was meant when it was given to our city and university? We don't have the Amazon jungle here in Mount Pleasant. But even with that massive Amazon sized area, roads, which is what you are building instead of staying with a walkway, roads destroy the natural area. Added traffic, they harm small ecosystems, the speed and noise, enemies of tranquility. Much more traffic will destroy the quiet beauty. And of course, there's always going to be trash. An asphalt road isn't like rolling out a ribbon on the ground. It kills and destroys forever. The rainwater is diverted and creates gullies. Laying down an asphalt road in White's Woods will always destroy the natural surface pathways and end all idea of a quiet nature. I've lived in my house for over 40 years. My kids went sledding on those hills over there. The subdivision was built. The church was built. It has a big parking lot. All of that extra roadage makes White's Woods even more wet than it used to be. It didn't used to be, we didn't need so many of those little wood bridges kind of things. It just sort of drained better. Now we have a lot of roadage and it's, it's not as good for it, if you ask me. Um, what always bothers me, not everyone has a car. They can't use the expressways. I'm told to play a good game of baseball on the parks in our city. Physically, not everyone can climb a mountain. I don't know why. We have to think every single person has to be able to go running and riding through White's Woods area. It's just some people just aren't going to be able to use the taxpayer, the taxpayer property. I say it again, how can this generation void the promise made when the woods was given as a quiet gift for the city and university? The original giver knew what quiet natural places needed, which was no wheels for one thing. And now everyone else thinks they know better. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak on this topic?
I know already had my time when I wasn't supposed to have my time. So, um, just 10 seconds. I implore somebody on the council to make a resolution to take White's Woods off the table right here, right now. That's it. Thank you. Please.
Is there anyone else in the audience? Not seen anyone. Jason, was there anyone online? Any emails? Gotcha. Okay. At this time, I will close the public hearing on this topic. And I will open it up to, uh, discussion by the commission. Vice Mayor Ecker?
Oh, I think, are we pointing at Commissioner Althea?
Giving me permission to speak.
Commissioner Althea, please.
Um, is it appropriate that we table this till the next meeting so we can change a page in it? Or what's the better process for us to do it to?
Yeah, this, this could be done. I just want to make sure the city commission understands though, and let's say swapping out a page or changing a page. The page could be changed if there's concern about the map and the communication that sends. The page could be changed if there's concern about the map and the communication that sends. So that is a possibility that we could do that. Again, what's being asked of the City Commission tonight, though, is more on financial planning, not particularly where a trail goes.
Vice Mayor Ake?
Okay. Okay, this, this relates to my earlier question about the amount, the 2.1 million, and where White's Wood fits into that. And I asked what would happen if White's Wood were not included in that? So it's very specific. So if the 2.1 million has nothing to do with including White's Woods in the budget, I'm gonna suggest that we take White's Woods out of this. May I add, in a previous conversation or discussion, I'm not, you know, so, my relationship with White's Woods, it's, it's complicated. So for me, it is personal. I have talked about this before. I walked through that. I did talk about the fact that even if a path were constructed, the distance between that path and the fences of some neighbors, it's absolutely too close. Not even up to 100 feet. Oh, yes. I have walked it. We've got a lot of white pines growing on the path, or at least the proposed path. In a previous conversation, I asked what would happen to the woods. We were informed that very minimal change would happen or impact would happen to the trees. I don't know how that's going to be possible without those trees disappearing. The, the path that already exists there is damaged. There's a lot of erosion in that area. I have, I, so, my position is a position of no support. I want to make that clear. And that's why I'm asking the questions that I'm asking. Apart, in addition to everything that we have heard so far, I do think that if there are alternative ways, as we have asked, you know, let's consider those alternative ways. And at this moment, remove White's Woods in, you know, in our consideration of the capital improvement plan.
Commissioner Bush?
I would support that as well. I just think that it leaves no gray area for misinterpretation. That seems to be the discussion that I, I've not, I've heard no alternative, you know, suggestions directly made. And I just think that that would be, we're always talking about as a commission, clarity. And, you know, even though this approval today does not relate to, directly to White's Woods, just the fact that it's even there is obviously mudding the water and, you know, sending a mixed message to the community. So I would also support, you know, taking it out of the capital improvement plan. And then perhaps also, you know, looking into, you know, yeah, more solid statement on, on White's Woods in the future.
Commissioner Perschbacher?
Um, I have no problem taking the, the map out. I do want to remind everyone that we did, a few meetings ago, ask for alternatives which they are creating to bring back to us. So we had pretty much a couple of meetings ago said we, we want to look at something other than White's. So it's not that we have already said we're going to do this. We've already asked for, for alternatives, which they will bring to us in the third quarter of this year for us to look at. If taking the map out helps people feel better about this, that is fine. I don't have any problem with that. But I do want to help everyone understand that we've already, we were already on the path of looking for alternatives. White's Woods was no longer truly on the table because of the, the comments that were brought to us earlier this year.
Other members of the commission? Comments, questions, discussion? Commissioner Zane?
Feel good about some of this discussion so far. And I'm almost, I don't want to say this is gonna resolve everything on the CIP, but that certainly takes care of a big item on a lot of people's personal agenda. The CIP is the capital improvement, improvement plan for the next six years. This is where the city's gonna spend its money. And we set up plans, some are gonna be modified before we get there, some, some aren't. This is one that looks like we're gonna move. But the discussion here today is not only about White's Woods, but about the capital improvement plan, which is like a miniature book. And I still have concerns about the amount of money that we're spending in the short term without doing the amount of maintenance that's required to, to keep things up in the city. But I've also recognized that for the administration, for the people in the city to make the budget, this needs to keep moving forward so they can work on the budget and say, here's where we're gonna spend our money. And as we figure out, you know, where to spend our money, and we use this as a guide, I would caution us to say, keep in mind that when we put out massive amounts of money, but we're not taking care of the infrastructure that we currently have, then in the long run, the city will be worse for it. And there's a lot of shortcomings in the CIP that relate to that.
As we're discussing, any, was there a specific shortcoming?
The finance director cited one earlier, that the sidewalks, we said we were just gonna do, we're gonna put 150,000 into each year, but we know it's, it costs 200 and something to take care of them. So those are gonna go down. We, we agreed, we didn't agree, but we were notified and we were told that, that the roads were gonna continue to decline because they're just not funded. And I appreciate some of the the creative ways we figured out how to take money from this pot and put it in that pot to help us try to stay even. But in the long run, some of those are not happening. Earlier, when we talked about the, approving that grant for the wastewater. And part of that, when you applied for the grant, you listed things in there. And I have to say, for people who watch this, this packet was huge because there's so much reading that you have to do to, to go through all this information. But if, if you're taking the time to go through it, it reemphasizes in that plan that here are the problems that we're having. Same problems that were pointed out in the CIP. And that's, those continue to be my concerns of underfunding what we already have and then adding new things to take care of when we, when there's not money to take care of the old stuff.
Thank you, Commissioner Zane. Let's see. Commissioner Rollins, any discussion? Gotcha. So talking for myself on a couple of things. Talking about White's Woods, I was going back through when page 41 specifically is mentioned, there is the map in there that is listed as the proposed Southern, South connection location map, focused on Chippewa Waters. And then, yes, through White's Woods into the Center Drive. As has been discussed, we have put through a forward, a request for proposals for alternates. And I think, especially as we've seen continued ground swell from members of the community on this topic, we likely are, like, it's something we're exploring. We're gonna get some additional options. Talking about the cost effectiveness of it also. Talking about pages 38 and 39, where the actual project is described over the long term. I, I'm not certain, and I might just, again, be rereading too quickly, but I'm not certain and I see a specific reference to White's Woods in pages 38 and 39, which describes the Mid-Michigan GKB pathway connections. Not that I'm saying it wasn't considered or anything, but I don't think I see the actual words or language referencing specifically just that it goes through Chippewa Waters, Waters Park. And then, of course, that would then, the logical extension of that is into White's Wood. If members of the commission wanna ask staff again, like, if there's interest in, from members of the commission in striking or editing out page 41, which listed the map there, what would that result in? Or what would that look like if we made a motion this evening to remove reference? I guess, what, like, how would that play out?
We would do exactly as the City Commission requests. And then we'd come back on June 9th with the fresh copy for the City Commission to consider adoption of.
Gotcha. So it wouldn't be something that we would simply just edit this evening? We would have that updated copy brought to us? Would we need an additional public hearing?
Nothing that I have seen in the charter would require it. It only requires that we have a special hearing, or, I mean, I'm sorry, not a special hearing, a public hearing on the CIP. So there's nothing in there that would state that we would have to come back for another public hearing for this or anything like that.
Gotcha. Again, I'm comfortable, my, like, again, myself as an individual, I'd be comfortable to leave, leave that plan, or the proposed page 41 referencing that, that map in the packets or in the overall proposed plan, knowing that we're going to have future discussions and that, and knowing that there's going to be continued public support or opposition to it is going to continue to spur us. Yeah, but I would be open to the commission making amendments if that was desired through a motion.
Everything that comes to the commission is considered a living document. It can be changed and altered at any time. Anytime that something comes up, we can always alter it. Just like with the CIP, we can alter it as we go. What might happen in '28, what's listed there? We're already asked for alternatives. In 2028, we've already asked for alternatives. There's absolutely, it's just what it is. We can have alternatives, which means that even if we pass this, it will go, it will go on and we can change it later in the plan. We've done that numerous times with the capital improvement plan.
Vice Mayor Ake?
I, I, I hear what you're saying. I think the problem is, even though we say that this is a, a living document, you know, as Commissioner Perschback has said, the problem is that if we don't, I'm being cautious about the word I'm gonna use decisively, edit out references to White's Woods in this particular document. There is no gain in saying what happens next year or the year after. Memory is a problem, all right? So I do think that, it seems to me that since White's Wood has nothing to do with the budget that we're looking at at this particular moment, I don't see any need to insert it in here right now and then confuse things. We take it out. We look at the language in 38 and 39 that nuances or hints at White's Woods. And we work that particular language so that if we're gonna have a conversation about White's Woods in the future or anything, I want that to be a separate document. But since we're looking at alternative trails, then why are we then, why do we need to keep White's Woods still in here? All right, so take it out. Take it out, people. There is strong opposition to it. I'm not supportive. So let's just take it out of this document and references or any hints at it out of this document, knowing that we are not talking about White's Woods. Not now, not tomorrow, or later. We will consider the alternative plans. That's what that's where I stand. I just simply don't want to monkey things. Let's just be clear on this.
Okay, um, let's see. Additional discussion before a motion is made?
I think, I think I'd like to, I'm not gonna do it yet, but I don't know if the right term is lay it on the table or, you know, whichever the term is, so that we can have a cleaner copy and pass it next meeting.
Rather than tabling something, I might, might recommend that we just, like, make a motion to direct staff to make, to make specific updates. Specifically because when we had our parliamentary procedure training, tabling was the foggiest section of that. I prefer to avoid the tabling of an item.
Yeah, it's on two different pages.
Yeah. So it, like, again, if there's a desire to make edits here regarding this topic, I would recommend a motion probably, again, up to, probably want to strike page 41. And then, again, I would recommend that's because that in 2027 and 2028, we still are looking to develop a pathway, perhaps just including that there is ongoing discussion or referencing future work sessions or referencing that there is ongoing discussion about how, how this will play out and where that development might occur.
I, I, I would like to make the motion. But even if we're developing a pathway, it's a path, the, the, the connection to White's Wood is the Mary Ellen Brendel Bridge. Okay, so if you, you know, so by inference or, you know, association, you think about that bridge connecting to a southern trail, it's gonna go through White's Wood. And that's what I'm trying to get, you know. So I want us to have a document that does not reference connecting from the Mary Ellen Brendel Bridge to the southern pathway. Because if you do that, then we're still talking about White's Wood, whether or not we mention it. I'm simply trying to say we should have a clean document here that does not reference going through White's Woods. I'm just gonna say it that way. And so part of what you need to do is, you know, clean up 38 and 39. Those references that suggest cutting across White's Wood.
I think the mayor was right. And he cited, one of the speakers, we spoke earlier, saying it wasn't in those two pages, but rather on page 41 is where it spelled it out. Because when you read those two pages, you don't see it. Where you see that the reference to it is on 41. So 41, page 41 is, is the CIP issue on that topic.
Page 41 is the map. There are hints in, in, on pages 38 and 39 that connect Mary. I don't know how you talk about, you know, the southern connection and then talk about Mary Ellen Brendel Bridge, which sits at the northwest corner of White's Wood. And not really, you know, so that's all I'm saying is that we may, I, I would like to make a motion recommending that staff take a look at this document, three pages, it's not gonna kill us, 38, 39, 41, and clean up those three pages, expunging anything that refers to White's Wood or suggests White's Wood on those three pages.
Okay.
That's my, that, I mean,
A motion, a motion has been made? Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
There is a second. All right, the motion, again, we'll just verifying this. The motion is to direct staff to revisit, revisit the 2026, 2031 Capital Improvement Plan, editing pages 38, 39, and 41 to remove references to pathway through White's Woods.
Yes.
Gotcha. So voting aye on, on this would indicate support for the motion and the removal of that, of those references. Voting nay on the motion would be in opposition. I believe, correcting myself from last time, we don't need a roll call vote as it's not an ordinance amendment. So I'm just going to ask if there's any final comments, discussion before making this motion here. Not seeing any. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Motion passes. Confirming with city staff, that would just be, we're gonna be revisiting this then on our June 9th meeting, it would be? Thank you. All right. See, it is currently 8:58. We have three items in new business. Before we move in, it has been, again, it is the two hour, just hitting the two hour mark for us. Is there interest in a recess before moving into new business?
Yes.
I'm seeing, is there a point of order or is just, I just want to double check that I'm, that that question is.
That's usually in our agenda, our recess is after public comment.
Gotcha. See.
I'm not opposed to it, but I'm just saying.
No, I wanted, I wanted to double check that. Yeah. Let's see. No, I wanted, I want to double check that. Yeah. Let's see. Um, in that case, there was a motion and a second for recess. How about that? All those in favor, um, all those in favor of taking a five minute recess before moving into new business, please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed will say nay when asked. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. We'll resume at 9:50, or 9:05. New business from the consent agenda. That was item number three. It was considered resolution granting six month extension for Hayes MP LLC to operate an adult use recreational retailer establishment at 914 East Pickard Street. Um, let's see, manager descends. If you're able to give a little bit of background before I pass it to Commissioner Zhang for his, his discussion on this.
I think you teed it up pretty good there, mayor. So it's exactly as it reads, Hayes MP LLC is looking for a six month extension so they can come into compliance to get their marijuana retailer license.
Gotcha. Do you, off the top of your head again, do you know what was out of compliance with it?
Oh, I don't believe.
Okay.
Just part of process.
Okay, thank you. All right. I'll hand it off to Commissioner Zhang. Your thoughts on the item?
I ask for this to be moved from the agenda so we can vote on it separately. I consider myself pro-business. However, on the matter before us today, I want to separate pro-business from my concerns about the benefits to the city and its residents. Hayes MP LLC has asked for an extension of certain deadlines related to authorization to operate their marijuana retail establishment. The application date was December of 2023 with conditional authorization being issued the same month. The requirement for the applicant, the requirement is that the applicant obtains state operating license within 18 months of the conditional authorization. That will be June 8th of 2025, next month. The business owner, the business owner is responsible for those dealings. My concern as a commissioner representing the public is the impact my decision will have on the community. Recreational marijuana is legal in Michigan. We have loads of marijuana facilities in Mount Pleasant. In fact, I've heard us called Pot City or Mount Pleasant, Pot Capital of Michigan. I don't like being associated with those names, but sometimes we get called, sometimes what we get called is of our own making. I do not think my support, supporting, granting and extension serves the community. I feel the overwhelming availability of marijuana makes junior high and high school students and any underage person more likely to use it. For adults, availability everywhere gives the impression that there's nothing wrong with it. But we have learned a lot in the past few years and now inclusively know that the serious side effects of marijuana, including significant higher risk of heart conditions and other health risks. We also know that there are more buzz drivers than in areas where marijuana is less available, making all of us a little less safe. I know that we paint a negative picture for potential students and their parents when they visit CMU, only to see the proliferation of marijuana businesses around town. And CMU is really important to our community. For the application before us, I do not know what is unforeseen in their request. And I do not know why third party bids are not secured in the, in the past year and a half. And I do not know what material delays means and why, what caused those delays for the past six, 12, or 18 months will be resolved with another six months. For the issue before us, the six month extension request is, is explained insufficiently. The owner knew and knows of the state licensed requirements and appears unlikely to be able to meet them. The city is already inundated with those type of businesses and future similar businesses do little for the benefit and the reputation of our city. For those reasons, I will be voting no on this request.
Gotcha. Is there addition? Mr. Nell Sager?
Well, the history that many of us know is first, we started with limited establishments, just three medical marijuana. And then when recreational got passed, three recreational. And we ended up, one, one of them had both. So we ended up with five. And then we had lawsuits of too many, lawsuits of we have enough. So we took out the limits and this is what we have to live with since we took out the limits. This request is no different than things we have passed in the past. So I'll be supporting it.
Additional discussion? Commissioner Bush?
I, I hear a lot of the statement I feel in Commissioner Zhang's comments. And, you know, I certainly understand having, you know, opinions one way or another that affect your own personal choices. But again, as Commissioner Allsager said, you know, this is no different than any other business application. And the city got $800,000 from the state last year of no strings attached money from having the licenses. And if I remember correctly, Director Laurie has answered this question several times, that there has been no increase in any sort of marijuana or otherwise related crime since, since these businesses rehabilitated empty buildings, created jobs, started paying taxes, all these benefits. And the argument that I just don't want to look at the businesses, this country tried prohibition once 100 years ago and it did not work out. And anybody who would say that, should Mount Pleasant also outlaw alcohol? Because alcohol certainly causes more health damages than marijuana does. So I'm not for that. I think it's a, you know, it's, I'd be supporting the extension of this.
Other members of the commission, discussion?
Just, Commissioner Bush, I, I wasn't saying marijuana is legal in Michigan. I'm not saying it's not, but I'm saying there are requirements that they need to follow. They can follow those like any other business has to follow it. For us to go out of our way because they did not meet the requirements is what I'm talking about. And the reasons, the reasons are, are not explained sufficiently for me to pass judgment on this.
We, we've approved considerations like this before though, for other businesses without any concern, I think is the point. And, and, and your statement was directly made on your feelings about the impression, not about the actual being requested by the city commission. So if you've got policy issues, that's different. But this is an issue of a business, like supporting, supporting a business that we, we have done for other businesses.
Commissioner Birchbacher, did you have your hand up?
No.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Rollin?
Good.
Vice Mayor Aker?
I, I, I think, you know, looking at this, I would ask if this were any other business that, or a business that went dealing with marijuana, would we give them, grant them the extension? And for me, the answer would probably be yes. So if we're going to do it for other businesses, you know, this is a business. So I really don't see what the complications. I'm done.
Okay. All right. At this time, is there a motion on this item?
I would like to move that we grant Hayes MP LLC a six month extension to operate an adult use recreational retailer establishment at 914 East Pickard Street. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any final comments before we go to a vote?
It's, it's an extension.
Yeah.
The motion is to consider resolution granting six month extension to Hayes MP LLC to operate an adult use retailer, recreational retailer establishment at 914 East Pickard Street.
Yeah. I, I think the motion would be correct there.
And so I'm making a motion to, to support this.
Gotcha. We would probably do a point of, point of order on that and everything, just as we're educating ourselves on parliamentary procedure. But I think that's correct there. Let's see. All right. Without any final comments or discussion on that, I would ask that all those in favor, if you're voting for the motion, you're voting in, you are approving the extension, the six months extension to Hayes MP LLC. If you're voting against, you will be voting down that extension. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
Motion passes. Okay. All right. That brings us to item number nine. I'm going to let Manager Descents tee this one up.
The Director of Public Safety, Paul Laurie, is asking for the city commission's authorization to purchase a replacement emergency services van for the police department at a cost not to exceed $80,640. A portion of this cost being $58,000 was awarded as part of the 2% grant provided by the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe of Michigan. The city commission is asked to approve this purchase. And correct me if I'm wrong, Director Laurie, at the subsequent budget amendment as well, the subsequent budget amendment for that as well.
Are there any questions for staff on this issue?
I just have a comment. I appreciated your write-up of it of, you know, you tried Plan A and you had to go to Plan B and it's working out just fine. So I'll be supporting this.
Gotcha. Gotcha. Any other discussion, comments? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve, to approve, to approve the purchase and the subsequent budget amendment.
I, I move that we authorize Director Laurie to proceed with the purchase of a 2024 Chevrolet Express van from Frederick Chevrolet somewhere in Ohio, no, Pennsylvania, in Pennsylvania, and to contract Quigley Motor Company for upfitting services for a total not to cost, not to exceed more than $80,640.
I second it.
Gotcha. There's a motion and a second. Any further?
Shouldn't the motion include and the budget amendment?
And, and the subsequent budget amendment. Thank you.
Gotcha. Okay.
I second it.
Gotcha. Um, that's any discussion? Not seen any. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, please say nay. Motion passes. All right. Okay. At this time, thank you greatly for your patience. We have a presentation from Donna Criss, area resident, who had attended both, I believe, the 20, the 2015, 2015, thank you, trip to Okeechobee and has recently returned from the 2025 trip to Okeechobee. Thank you for being with us and I'm glad to see you had safe travels.
Thank you.
Can I just, okay, thank you.
I'm Donna Chris. Thank you so much. I'm so excited to be here tonight. Before I begin, I wanted to really thank the city of Mount Pleasant. I was sitting in my hotel in Japan, and I got a call from the Mount Pleasant City Water Department stating that they were worried for me because I had used typically 3,000 gallons a month, and something was drastically wrong, and it's using 30,000 gallons as of my call. So I really appreciate that call so much. I think that it was Susan that called. I'm not sure on that, but it was a female that called. And I actually thought, I am very low on this totem pole. If they're trying to get a hold of anybody else, they've really gotten the bottom of the barrel here. But it was for my personal water usage, and I really truly appreciate it. So thank you for that. I am a former International Relations Council Secretary. I was part of that committee 10 years ago for the 50th meeting of our sister city of Okeechobee, Japan. It was such an honor to be able to return there, such an honor to recognize the former mayor. I have a picture that I'll try to show that's not included in the slideshow. But what a difference it makes 10 years. The former mayor is now in charge of the International Relations Council. How it happens in Japan, you are rising star, and then you hit 60, and then you are transferred over to the International Relation Board. And it was just, he recognized me, I recognized him, he gifted me a picture of us from 10 years ago. And so that was just quite a delight, you know? So I just wanted to bring that up again. The continuity was especially important with this sister city of Mount Pleasant. Why have a sister city? The motto of sister cities is promote peace through mutual respect, understanding, cooperation. One individual, one community at a time. And certainly when the signature page was read and signed, it was just a really very formal, very joyous event. So I just thought that I would read the sister city relationship meeting from 2025. Mount Pleasant, Michigan, USA, and Okeechobee, Japan have forged a close relationship through numerous exchange programs since beginning sister cities 60 years ago in 1965. We hereby reaffirm our promise to continue to actively promote exchange activities in areas such as education, culture, sports, economics, and technology, and hope to further strengthen the friendship between our two cities. On the occasion of the Mount Pleasant delegation's visit to Okeechobee in commemoration of the 60th anniversary of our sister city twinning, that's another thing that, it's called sister city or twinning cities. We pledge to work together to maintain and further develop the fruitful relationship we share. Reaffirming our friendship in this time of ever-changing world affairs, it is our hope that we may be able to contribute to better bilateral relations between the United States of America and Japan, as well as to world peace. So that was our agenda. I have it, I think, in the slideshow in Japanese, so. This is the formal welcome dinner that we had. Japan is very, very, I appreciate you saying this was the book for the meeting earlier, John. Every single event that we had, there was a book with a fold-out seating chart on where everyone would be seated. It's very regulated, very, how it goes is where you sit. And everybody could direct anybody else where to sit because they had the seating charts. So I just want to point out the yellow scarf here on Amy Perschbacher was gifted that from one of the teens that was here in the fall last year. And he recognized it. He was there and said, I like your scarf. And she said, thank you. And he said, I picked it out. So how, this kind of small thing is just like, very, very interesting. So this is the formal welcome dinner that we went to. Amazing food. Sometimes we didn't know what we were eating. Mary and I were seated next to each other, and I said, was that an egg? And we were trying to debate what it was, so just an interesting food. We were given a tour of the Hayashi family house. This house was built by one of the silk barons of Okeechobee. Okeechobee made its money and a lot of foreign trade, most of it to the United States, doing silk. Here we have, on the left screen, we show the screens of the house. And the upper portion of it, I really want to point out, that was carved out of one entire piece of wood. And it works both as decoration and as airflow between the house. And the relief picture that you see on one side of it is completely different or added to on the other side. So on this side, there might be the mountains and the clouds and everything. And on the other side, might be like a gaggle of geese. It's just amazing on one side. And then this is one of the few places in Japan where we did have to take off our shoes because you go through it, and there are white mats, there's rice mats everywhere. And so you don't step on the cement, you walk on the platform, hang your shoes up there on the platform, so. An amazing gift was given to us as city representatives and for me. A formal tea service is one of the highest honors that can be given. And they gave us a formal tea service. This was done in that house, and it was done there out of tradition. When he would make business deals, he would have tea services done. And so that was, one of the ladies that dressed up in her original, it's not a costume, it's their, what they wear. And the middle was a little nosh that we got, not super sweet, just a little taste of cleansing palate. And the last one is Mr. Aaron drinking the tea. It was very specific in how we were given the tea. You get the tea, you twist it twice, you then taste it, and it's really good. It was matcha tea. It was lovely. So. On the left is Jared. He was one of our interpreters and one of our people that was with us from early, early morning to late at night. What we didn't know is his secret talent. He moved to Japan five years ago, knowing no Japanese. And he is fluent enough to be working at the International Center now. And he gave a concert as a gift back to the ladies for giving us the tea service. He is also a Buddhist monk, and he gifted me one of his flutes, which I am just so grateful for. I can't play it yet. It'll take probably a while for me to get used to it. But the honor of his flute playing within his Buddhist tradition is that he does not play for an audience. He plays for the joy of it and giving it to, we had specific plants that the ladies had picked out for us. And there was a specific mural that was picked out just for us, for that moment in time. And that was just an amazing gift that was given to us, and we were just thrilled with it, as were the ladies, too. Just so appreciative of being recognized and honored of that. This is the formal signing of the affirmation. That's what I have up here in English. So I don't, you know, we had the opening address, the greetings from the Okeechobee mayor, greetings from Mount Pleasant Vice Mayor Eke. The delegates were introduced, and the signing of the reaffirmation statement. And there was an exchange of a commemorative gift, and I think Mary's got that now. This was given to Vice Mayor Eke from the mayor of Okeechobee. This is one of the famous children's artists from Japan. And we were able to visit a museum. We'll get a couple shots of that later. But this was a gift to the city of Mount Pleasant. And just like we have our cabinet back there of things from Okeechobee, they also have one. It'll come up later on. So thank you so much. This is the formal signing of the reaffirmation. To tell you what tradition means to Japanese individuals and the government, the pen that the Okeechobee mayor is signing with is the original pen used in 1965 to sign the original affirmation agreement.
He had to put it in some ink.
Right. He, it was, the whole thing, it was brought up like it was a separate honorable portion of the event. And, and he was like, okay, it doesn't work. No, 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 you gotta put it in ink over here. So it was just, it was amazing. I was able to talk to Rick Mills in between. And so we got articles about the travel and stuff in the Morning Sun also. This is the display that goes on in City Hall. These are gifts from the city of Mount Pleasant for many, many years. Several from Saginaw-Chippewa tribe, and others, I mean, it's just interesting. This is our history that they have and that they cherish. And so it was just really cool to see it. This was in the formal City Hall where we walked in and especially seated where we were going to be seated. And I know it won't show, nobody can see it, but this is the gentleman that I recognized from, I don't know where to put it, here, here, here. 10 years ago, I walked into the City Hall, and I said, well, hello, you know? And I recognized him, and he was just so surprised to be remembered for that. And so these are items that are gonna be cherished. One of the things that we did was to walk around Buddha. I think this Buddha is from 1620. And the, how they do it is you rub his belly, and you think about something that you want to accomplish. You walk around old Buddha three times and just assume that he has heard what you are seeking and will be with you to help you reach that goal. So that was pretty cool. One of the very interesting things in Japan, and I don't know if you can look at this picture, and is there anything different that you see in this picture that's different than in the United States? And brother, there's no locks. You don't steal in Japan. We were quite worried for our, one of our guides, he had a backpack, especially me, you know? I'm Department of Corrections background, and hey, your backpack, don't, you know? And he goes, nobody is gonna take it. And so this was just stunning to me that this is this kind of community-oriented activity. There's no locks. When I got to our, our different place, they don't lock doors. They have very little crime. This was outside of lunch one day. This was a local neighborhood temple. And they have these throughout the city, cities actually. And it's just a place to stop and take a breath and recognize who you are in the community. This was outside of a sushi place that we had for lunch, and we gorged on. And I just loved the sentiment that this is where we are at this moment. We are here, we're gonna pause and be grateful. I'm kind of skipping ahead, but this is the farewell dinner. Again, assigned seats were here. And this is our interpreter Jared and the mayor welcoming us again and thanking us, being so grateful that we came and that we are continuing this sister city community. It is so honorable to be a part of this. I, it's just very, very moving to see the difference. I don't think that in the United States, we have that kind of commitment. And it was just so incredible to be part of this again. Here, Mr. Aaron has given the mayor a gift from him to the mayor. And then Mary had some little presents that she presented that were, it was interesting because some of it, like, we don't think about it, like, they don't use tablespoon, say, or that kind of thing. They're using other stuff, you know? So it was just interesting as we were exchanging gifts, and they gave us just amazing gifts, a lot of it from the museum that we were able to go to that the picture is from. This is Vice Mayor Eke with the mayor. And Amy Perschbacher was able to give the farewell thank you speech. Itsuki is the lady in the middle, and she has been to Mount Pleasant several times. I knew her 10 years ago when she was pregnant. I was able to see the baby that she was pregnant with while I was over there. And her son, through her, commented to me, I'm really mad at my mom because the only time that I have been to Michigan, the only time that I've been to Disney World, the only time that I have been in the United States was when I was inside of her. And so he really wants to come. And we've got kids going from Mount Pleasant, I think in August. Seven kids are going in August, and they are preparing for it, they are readying for it. And the amount of preparation that it takes, we were taken care of from the minute we got up. The bus tickets were there, we had whatever transfer tickets we needed were there. Everything was just well thought out. It was just joyous. The last picture is, I think that is not the Board of Education guy. Vice, Vice Mayor, thank you, Vice Mayor in the last picture there. This is Aaron and the friend that we made there. He is the one who picked out the scarf. And I believe he will be escorting our kids around when they are there in Okeechobee. Again, there's Mary presenting some presents. And the last one is like, we're just finishing up some of our meal. And it was just great food all the way, all the way around. We were able to visit the silk factory, Okeechobee. This is factory, but they say fact. I could have 50 slides on this alone. It was a historical review of how silk was made, going from the three strands that they used to weave to modern-day technology now. In this factory, they also have still a working factory for silk and weaving and that kind of thing. I think I've got more pictures coming up of that. So we made the newspaper when we were there, not for anything bad. This is really cool. We, it's always scary when you're making the newspaper, right? But when we went to the silk factory, it was very interesting because the expert there said, I read all about you in the newspaper this morning. And this is what he saw, and this is what was read. The amount of formality that occurred, we couldn't walk into City Hall early because our guide was afraid he'd get fired. He said, no, we have, no, we can't even offload here. We have to walk over there because it is set for like 4:10. And it's 10 to 4, and we're not gonna go early. So just that kind of perfectness in how things work. And then a nice article that I thought was in the Morning Sun, I was able to collaborate with Rick Mills on that. This is the expert at the Silk Museum. The picture behind him is of the thousands of women that worked the silk factories. They have, if you look on the right, you can see the little tiny strands of silk. And that's what they were weaving three at a time back in the day. The middle one is the stamps of where the silk had been sent all over the world, mostly to the United States through the exportation. They were devastated after the war because what happened? Nylon was invented, polyester, all those kind of things which just destroyed their cities and stuff because of the exportation was no longer that needed. This is part of, this is part of the modern day. On the left, this was us in the beginning where he was explaining like how it happened, how the chimneys had affected. had affected because they were all coal driven and the amount of pollution that occurred in Okeah. And then they switched over to gas and electricity. Um, and again, on the right is just one of, uh, uh, more modern, um, examples of how silk is produced today. And they still do it almost exactly the same way. They have, they soak the little balls in water. They have a little, like a, uh, a comb that kind of catches the end of them. They grab the ends of it and then they can s- stick it into the machine and then it's unraveled. Um, the typical, um, use of, I can't remember what those egg things are called, the.
Cocoon.
The cocoons, thank you so much. Two thousand four hundred cocoons to make a s- something about like this.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Kimono.
This was at the El Dugan Museum where the cartoonist that, that gave us, um, the picture, um, is. This is a result of some of his work. Some of his books took over eight years to make. What you're looking at here is tiny, tiny slices of Mother of Pearl. He had a group of people who were his supporters and he would do about two hundred books like this. Um, and the, on the right-hand side are the boxes that he made specifically to hold his books. He was, um, quite a, um, not a control freak, but he liked to know who had his books. And so he would number them with the name of the person who gave them so that if he saw someone who didn't, he didn't give one to, that person was taken off of the list and they would never receive another of his books. So these are, um, Mother of Pearl books on, and he did various, um, different kinds of paper that were just incredible and these were held in storage. This was another, um, example of us just being treated so amazingly. This is not available for the general public. This was, they were brought out, um, dealt with. We were able, she wanted us to touch them, to feel them and see the texture that was there. This is during the formal, um, the formal dinner that was here. Um, Itski made the little cranes that were on the right-hand side. And one of the things that, um, we did for the, when they were here, um, for their visit here, we did, I think there were a thousand cranes at the children's museum with part of the, um, children of Mount Pleasant making the cranes for them. Again, this is the mayor's table at the formal dinner. We were able to visit a couple of temples that was just amazing. On the left, we have, um, Mary and Amy. You, in the middle, first, let's start with the middle. In the middle, you go to the temple and you cleanse your hands, first the left, then the right, and then you kind of like take a sip of the water. Um, in this particular temple, there were two different cleansing stations. One of them was a spring and it was very, very warm. This particular one in the middle there was, was cold, but the next one that we went to, it was hot. It was definitely hot springs. Uh, you walk up, you listen, you clap, there's a, there's a way to do it, so that's what we did. This is a family at the temple who was there dedicating their newborn child, their newborn daughter. And, um, we were able to make contact with them and give our blessing to them, sort of. It's like, um, one of the commissions, one of the members like gave them some money because that's what you do when you see a newborn baby. You give them money for the baby as a gift. And so then we left and they tracked us down further in the temple to be able to thank us as a group, as a committee. And again, this is just like another way to, um, establish that, that sense of community with all of us. There's English everywhere there, pretty much. Sometimes it doesn't quite make what we think it should be. Um, and so it's always kind of humorous to see some of the different signage that is there. I'm not gonna say it out loud. This was our ticket just showing how amazingly well we were taken care of. We had to get a van to the train. We took the train, we took the bus from the train and all along the way, they went with us the two hours or more back to Okeah to catch the plane. Um, they went with us to make sure that we got where we were supposed to go because they wanted to be done. But it was just, it was just a really beautiful time, um, very honorable and it was just like, I just am so exceptionally grateful to be again, part of this. So any questions or anything for that? One more thing, I just, I, I don't think I included it in the slide, but, um, it's very interesting. The workers that are like on the side of the road, they are all color coordinated. And so like, you know, just by looking, the blue is like the boss. The yellow is the, the next, the worker bee or whatever. And so we're just, um, very interesting that just at a glance, you know who the boss is. So, yeah. Um, yeah.
One other thing I thought was interesting was, um, before the war, they had fifty different, um, establishments that were making silk.
Yeah.
And now they have one. So they did learn to diversify and get other businesses, but it's because they had to.
Um, this particular one is like city owned. This is supported by the city of Okeah and it is like their national, one of their national treasures.
Yeah.
If you go to Okeah.
They were privately owned.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
It was neat.
Thank you very much, Donna. Okay. See, at this time, we have no other items in new business. We'll move on to announcements on city-related issues and new business. Let's see, moving through our list, um, Commissioner, Commissioner Alsack, or any announcements?
I'm Alsack.
Gotcha. Commissioner Bush?
I'm Alsack.
Commissioner Eke, or Vice Mayor Eke? Oh, Commissioner Perschbacher?
Um, the only thing I had to, um, while we were in Japan, I understand that you guys had quite a few storms come through. Um, and I want to remind people that they do need to pull their trash and recycling receptacles back up to their, their, um, house or in their driveway, not to leave them in the street or on the sidewalk as if they are blown over or if they're in the way when somebody's trying to get through, it can cause a lot of damage.
True. Thank you. Commissioner Rollins?
Nothing.
Gotcha. I don't have anything at this time. Commissioner Zeng?
Just a couple of quick things here. One is that the Isabella seniors on Thursday is, uh, June fifth is having their, uh, celebration for their new pavilion. Uh, an Elvis person, Elvis impersonator will be there and it'll be a, uh, old car cruising event. And so that's on the fifth. Also, a reminder, if you're a male, eighteen years old, after your birthday, it's still a requirement that you register, uh, with the Selective Service System for the draft. There hasn't been a draft since seventy-three, but it's still a requirement, so you should keep that in mind if you have a son that falls in that category, remind him, uh, it's important to do that. Thank you.
And then Vice, uh, Mayor Eke, you had?
Um, the.
Come back to you.
Yeah, the, um, the Saginaw Chippewa Indian Tribes Annual, uh, Healing, Honoring and Remembering, um, you know, event happens every June sixth and so that should be coming up.
All right. Thank you.
It happens at the old, you know, the, uh, the boarding school, Picard. Okay.
Thank you for that break in Lepidie there. Director Loria?
Thank you, Director Loria.
Okay. Um, we have moved out of announcements. Um, is there any public comments on agenda and non-agenda items? Not seeing anyone in the audience unless Donna's rushing back up? Let's see. Director Loria?
Yeah, I just wanna make sure the public knows, um, and for residents, uh, Special Olympics is in town this week at CMU. So, um, it'll be busy over there. I would encourage people to go there and watch the games. It's, it's, it's fun. Um, it's, it's just a great experience, so.
Thank you. Anyone online?
No.
Okay. The Special Olympics. Yeah. Let's see. Okay, we, um, had a recess. It is late. We have one final item as a work session on our, um, agenda. So unless there's any objections, we'll move straight into the discussion on Epic MRA Workplace Climate Survey. No objections to that?
Objection.
Perfect. Um, going over this, so you can see on the front page here, um, list of, uh, itemized feedback that I had provided, um, to Epic MRA based of our, off our discussion. Um, yeah, there it is. Um, based off of our discussion at the previous work session, the majority of it, um, was some housekeeping items and again, I think items that there was just general consensus on. So if you're going through, um, first bullet points, we had, there was an incomplete sentence that was corrected. And the second bullet point, it was the general approval of cutting the open-ended questions. If you recall, in the second draft that we had obtained, um, to help condense the survey, which was very long, we had a number of open-ended questions after each question. Mo- the, I believe all of those listed there were those open-ended questions. So it's just saying, yes, we think that's a good idea. There was general consensus on that. Questions fifty-three and fifty-four, um, those were regarding, um, the type of work that was done. Um, it's, uh, like, um, the classification of work that a, a staff member performs and were they a part of a bargaining agreement? Um, again, those were removed. I don't think there was any objections. It seemed we had general consensus to remove those. Um, again, not wanting to discourage anyone from potentially identifying themselves or giving any shadow of a doubt about that. Um, let's see. Question fifty-nine, we made some updates to the listings of genders, um, to, for statistical analysis. Um, I think I captured those from our discussion. Man's changed, a man changed a male, woman changed a female. We all, it includes already transgender and non-binary. I think we felt comfortable cutting agender, um, and there is also a listing of other. Um, but again, not hearing anyone jump in at that. Um, the commission, let's see. Um, I acknowledge that again, it, um, commission felt, um, the fir- they suggested three questions. Um, all of them were open-ended. The first two was asking for posit- like, open-ended positive takeaways from that people or impressions that people have of cities, of the city. Let's see, this is question eight A and eight B. Let's see. Um, let's see. What are one or two things that you like the most about working for the city of Mount Pleasant with two slots for open-ended response? What are the one or two things that you dislike the most about working for the city of Mount Pleasant to a section for open-ended response? Um, it's, again, my impression was that there was consensus that those were okay. The third one, there was call, like, seen as a call for speculation was the take, takeaway that I had as we were discussing, but we felt comfortable opening it up to former employees. So, um, doing, uh, again, like, working with, um, human resources to see what contact information we have and providing that to Epic MRA to do that survey process. And they have a section on page nine, the last page, on how they would go about that process as well. Um, page twelve, let's see. Um, it was just making sure that that was included as a question, if that was going to be sent live. It was more directed as, um, a physical copy of the survey. And that brings us to the last three bullets, um, regarding, um, a couple of things in these ones. I think, uh, I, I, the last section, there was a bit of contention within the commission. And I just wanna be the first to say that again, we can't resolve that tension during a work session unless someone just, on one side, just completely says, yeah, no, I'm good. So that may just require a vote on that, to include or not to include. Um, so we could do that during a, during a formal session, which again, I'm gonna be proposing, like, I would like to have this in front of us for a formal vote so we can approve it at the next meeting on June ninth, um, because I think the bulk of the survey is good and in place. Um, but again, there are these questions here, which again, from the work session, it seemed that there was contention, so I just want to acknowledge that. Page thirteen, um, oh, um, question regarding, um, gender, um.
Yeah. I only have nine.
Now, where are you in twelve and thirteens?
Oh, um, that was, so page thirteen, yeah, so, yeah, thank you for that correct, uh, that correction there. That was, yeah, um, so my comments and feedback that was given to them was based off of the scrap two, which added more pages.
Yes, right.
Yeah. So, um, I would direct you then to, on that bullet, the first one that references page thirteen, it'd be looking at question thirty-one D is what we're looking at. Yeah. Thank you for catching me on that, Grace, because I didn't even, I wasn't paying attention to that. Um, let's see, yeah, thirty-one D. All employees are treated equally regardless of gender and it has a feeling thermometer along with it. Agree to disagree, starting with strongly going to strongly. Um, let's see. That one, I think there was general consensus on that one, actually. So I don't think there was any problem with that one. Let's see. Let's see. Um, I indicated to them that, um, questions concerning top management were being debated. Um, I think the concern about it that was presented was that they were too leading, um, as far as one direction or another. Um, not to preclude them from like the possibility of being on there, um, but I, again, just based off the fact that we didn't really reach general consensus about it, I'd want to move to an actual vote on any of those questions. Uh, they changed, um, top management down to management. I don't think my feedback was really clear on that. Um, it was more, but if I can direct you, page, so on that topic, regarding top management and that concern there, I actually proposed a question, um, to them. Let's see, it's on the second page here, the packet, on the flip side of the first page. Um, based off of that concern of it being too leading or too, um, I can't remember the exact word, but again, uh, anyway, um, I proposed the question of the senior management team communicates goals and objectives effectively with a feeling barometer associated with that. Again, giving us something to work with there. Thoughts on that question from the commission? That's something new that's being presented in this. Again, looking for a feeling thermometer about, again, communication within the organization.
I think it follows well. They're asking if, the one before it, if city commission is supportive. They may or may not have a feeling on that. Senior management, they might have more of a feeling on that.
Gotcha. That's something that, gotcha. General, uh, general K with including that?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Um, let's see. And then another question, and this one would be spent, um, pointed out specifically to former employees who would survey. Um, I believe, um, Vice Mayor Eke had suggested the idea of asking to like get a sense of their relationship to the city was, would you, um, you would return to employment at the city if the opportunity arose in the future? Agree, disagree of like that takeaway there? Good. Thoughts from the commission?
Fine.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Okay. City commit, yeah, and then the, going back, yeah, it was the city commission is supportive of city employees, um, of turning that mirror back on us also as we're asking.
I think they asked for that.
I believe you had asked for that, yeah. Gotcha. Okay, so that lead goes back to, let's see.
Yeah, I like that we added that.
Gotcha. Questions, concerns? Again, this is a work session, um, so we aren't taking formal action, but I, if, I think the bulk of this, we would be good to, again, approve at the next, uh, city commission meeting on June ninth, if there's general interest in that. Gotcha. Yeah.
Is there some reason why we need special? I mean, we've already said we're gonna get this and if there's agreement on this, why can't you just kick that off? Because we've already said we're gonna do this.
Well, I s- I started like walking myself through, like, doing this rapid fire, like, making sure everyone's brought up to date on this. I suppose if everyone's okay, like, I could and everything, but I didn't wanna overstep bounds on that again. So that's where I serve at, at the behest of the commission. So directing it over to Commissioner Perschbacher, yeah.
Well, considering this was on the dais and none of us had a chance to read it prior, I think that it's important that we read it at, you know, at our leisure to go through everything in there, to make sure that it, um, is exactly how we want it said. And. And if there are changes, to email the mayor, the changes that we feel are necessary or we feel we would like to see.
Commenting on the fact that it was on the dais, yeah. I wanna give you times to, a time to work with it. I'll make sure, yeah, I'll make sure an electronic copy is sent out this evening. I've had some just personal things that came up that just delayed me being able to get this. Please do look at the dates that these emails were being exchanged back and forth. But again, we will have time to again, process this, to take it in. So again, I've, again, if it was something as simple as like everyone just said, boomer, why are you waiting around and everything, then we could move ahead. But again, it's the desire, I think, to be thorough and then wanting to make sure everyone's on board with whatever we decide. And there can be contention, there can be disagreements about specifics on it. But to do that, we have to bring it to the formal vote. And that's where, again, like at the next session, if there is any specific tweaks that need to be made, we can vote upon specific items within it that can be struck or removed. And with that, we could then just move forward at the June 9th meeting. Yes, seen, alarmed her bed. Other, other comments, questions? Concerns? With that, again, I will go ahead and get the, Epic MRA know and I'll get you electronic copies this eve, well, it's gonna be tomorrow that I email those out. And then we will have this on the agenda for the June 9th meeting. So no other business before the commission this evening. I'm gonna call us adjourned at 10 o'clock. Thank you.
All right.
That's for you. Yeah, we own, that was from when we did the.